Okay. Good evening, Michael, welcome to the September fourteenth River Falls City Council meeting. First we will do a stand to say the funding begins. Five regions. Take them America. It's very wild for which stands one nation in their time individual. The delivery can just. Can you roll call please Mr.?
Beer set.
Here.
Carol.
Here.
Ellen.
Here.
We're set. Miller. Yeah. OD.
Here.
Pocket.
Here. Okay, next I approve the minutes from the August twenty-fourth workshop River and closed session. That's.
We approve all the minutes.
Okay. First the second, all favor.
I.
Close. Okay, next we have approved the bills with Ms. Millen.
I make a motion to approve the bills in the amount of two million three hundred and thirty-eight thousand eight hundred and ninety-four dollars and sixty-one cents.
Second. Okay, first and second, any questions, Adams? All favor.
I.
Close. Okay, next we go on to public comments. Um, before we get public comments, Azie Snyder, who is our Pierce County Public Health Director, is here tonight. If she had anything she might say quick. And if the council has got any questions, we can direct those questions to Scott when we get to the. Who the administrative department.
Uh, thanks to Mayor, Mayor Tolan. Um, so first I want to provide an update on hospital capacity and healthcare capacity in the western region of Wisconsin. Um, so I'll be honest, things are really tight right now. Um, it's not an emergency in every hospital, but certainly things are are moving less than ideal. Fifty percent of the ICUs in Wisconsin are at peak capacity. And when we look just at the western region of Wisconsin, we only have six ICUs. Five of them are at peak capacity tonight, which means when we have someone in a med serving bed in the hospital in western Wisconsin, and they need to go to an ICU, they're going to go pretty far away from home to get an ICU. Right now, we're transferring people all the way down to McCross and all the way over to Fairville, Minnesota. So things are getting difficult when it comes to transfers. Urgent cares are really, really busy. If you go into an urgent care right now to get a COVID test, you're going to be waiting for quite a while. Doesn't mean you shouldn't go, but take advantage of some of those community testing options, including at the UWRF campus. I just spoke to the director of nursing at River Falls Hospital before I came over here. They're doing pretty well. They're hanging in there. Um, they're not seeing the level of COVID patients that some other hospitals are in the area, which is good. They do have beds available and they're working closely with other hospitals in western Wisconsin and with the Minnesota Bed Care Nation Center in case they need to transfer somebody. Their number one issue right now is really staffing. Staffing has become a real issue in the healthcare industry. Um, we are facing a nationwide nursing shortage, which is impacting all healthcare systems. Um, and then I'll give a quick update on cases. Um, so I don't want to report cases for last week because we are having an issue with the community surveillance system at the state level. We don't think all of our cases have been counted for last week. We're still working with the state to correct the issue. It has something to do with the vendor that the state uses. But the week before last, we had a hundred and twenty-one cases in Pierce County, which was overwhelming for public health. Um, when we look at the rate of cases in the city of River Falls, we had twenty-six cases in the past seven days. Again, that might be slightly undercounted based on that Wednesday issue that we're having. Um, that gives you a rate of one hundred and sixty-five cases per hundred thousand, which is comparable, for instance, with the city of Hudson. So while your rate is not atrocious as it is in some other areas of the county of Pearson, St. Crook counties, that's still a relatively high rate, but we're putting well into the CDC's red category. Um, UWRF has come back in session since they started testing. Um, around the seventh or the eighth, we've had fifty-four UWRF students test positive. Not all of them are Pierce County residents. Many of them live in Minnesota or other counties in Wisconsin. Well, this may seem like a lot of cases, and it is. We have to remember that they are conducting asymptomatic surveillance testing of ten percent of their unvaccinated population every week. So their positivity rate is substantially lower than the counties. So they're doing a good job of detecting disease outcomes. That's all I have for you. Thank you.
Okay, thank, thanks, Mrs. I appreciate you taking time on your business schedule.
Absolutely.
Okay, is everybody else in the audience has anything to stand up and talk about? Okay, we move on to, uh, the presentation from Connie Vassal, our library director.
So my name is Connie Vassal. Connie, I'm the library director. Hello, our honorable city council members, and thank you for the opportunity to speak with you tonight. So September is library card sign up month. Observance was launched in nineteen eighty-seven to meet the challenges of then Secretary of Education William Bennett, who said, let's have a national campaign. Every child should obtain a library card and use it. Since then, the nation's libraries unite every fall at the beginning of the school year in effort to ensure that every child has a library card. First of all, I want to tell you a little bit about the general resources that we have to offer. Our more library card, that's just a simple piece of plastic. Gives patrons access to over one point four million items in our northwest Wisconsin library system. That one point four million includes physical material, downloadable like, downloadable media like eBooks, e-audio books, e-magazines, online learning and research resources. Now of that one point four million, about ninety thousand belong to the River Falls Public Library. In addition to that, if you hold a more library card, you can have access to books outside of our system as well as other material. We also link kids and teens to online research databases like Badgiling Resources for Kids. That includes encyclopedias, and they're not like the encyclopedias that most of us grew up with. Trust me, they're just far more robust and digital than we ever had. Dictionaries, magazines, newspaper resources, and and just more for kids. Badgiling also provides access to Learning Express, Novelist K-8, and teaching books. Learning Express provides prep tests for high school equivalent credentials. Also college admission testing preparation for like the ACT and the SAT. School Center for Skill Improvement in Math, English, Science, Social Studies, Technology, as well as Logic and Reasoning. Our Novelist K-8 is a database of K-8 fiction titles that include read-alikes, recommendations, and reviews and more. It's like if somebody were to say, I like this book, I'd like to read something like it, that's a read-alike. So teaching books gives, uses a chance to see and hear directly from the creators of the best books for children and adults through original in-studio audiovisual recordings of the authors and the illustrators. Plus it does a lot more than that. So the only thing it takes to get a library card for your child is to come into the library um, as a legal guardian of a child with a photo ID and proof of address, and you have access to all of those materials. Um, every year, St. Bridget School works with the River Falls Public Library to get library cards for their students. We'll work with any local school to achieve the same goal. School field trips will resume this fall. School groups will follow the same mask vehicles as their school requires. I'm happy to report that in-person programming for all ages will resume this September. Preschool programs will continue to be held under the outdoor canopy as long as the weather permits. After that, all programs will be held in the larger community room rather than the small storytime room in the lower level of the library with limited occupancy. And um, we'll ask everybody to be wearing their masks and also to observe social distancing requirements. Obviously, we are living in a very changing world. So if if things change, we will may have to respond differently. But our plan at this point is to continue and reopen in-person programs. Lastly, I would like to announce that we have a new youth services librarian starting on September twentieth. Her name is Kathy Larson. She has a total of eleven years of experience in public libraries within the northwest regional library system. She worked with a public library in Blue Room, Wisconsin for seven years as a youth librarian and a no-ler for four years in collection development. Kathy holds a master's degree in library information science and a master's degree in education professional development. Clearly Kathy comes to us with a wealth of knowledge. We are thrilled that she is joining our team. Thank you for your continued support of the Falls Total Library.
Um, questions for, Miss Vassal? Great. Connie, thanks. Great job. Okay. Next one is, uh, we have a change of age request for We Market Co-op to do a business as a whole work for cooperative over River Falls. And I'll take a motion on this.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion for approval of Robyn Bowles, an agent for our We Market Co-op TVA cooperative over River Falls.
Second. Second question, Mr. Adams?
Mr. Morris, Senator Adams.
No.
You understand the roles and responsibilities?
Yes. I think there were three questions you had, but yes, yes, yes. Essentially, you know that you're responsible if anything happens. I do. I'm very clear on that.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Anything else? Okay, all favor?
I.
Close. Okay, next is a change of age for a quick reference, uh, store number three oh one. And again, take a look at this.
Mr. Mayor, I make approval of Robyn, an agent for a quick search or three oh one.
Questions? Same, same. Oh, yeah, go ahead.
Yeah, well, same questions, you understand the role while they. Yes. You're responsible, even if things are happening or not. Yes.
And and I think the third question is, you have your service license?
I do.
Okay, thank you. Perfect. Thanks.
Thank you.
Okay, all favor?
I.
Close. Okay, next we're closing the council hearing and open up a public hearing on a quest for a reserved combination B liquor and Class B beer license for Tattersall companies. And I'll see, uh, when this has Tattersall still being, still in company. And I'll, and is everybody in the audience has anything to say about this? Nope, then I'll close the public here and we'll open up the council hearing and I'll take a motion on this.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we grant your request for issuance of a reserved combination Class B and Class B beer license to Tattersall Company that obviously leaving. Tattersall is still in company.
Okay.
Okay, first and second, questions?
Uh, the.
Yeah.
Agent here.
I am.
Yeah.
I agree. Jeff Weehold, North Sea Hospitality.
Hi, Jeff. Uh, before they're there.
I'm sorry, go ahead.
Okay.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, um, I understand that Tattersall's operated in Minnesota for a number of years. Uh, Minnesota has a ramble town, which is something that does not exist here in Wisconsin. The only tool that we have as a council to ensure that establishments are not over-serving customers and resulting in problematic issues for the community is the issuance or the traction of a license, by my understanding. And as a result, I'm interested in what approach your establishment will take to ensure that we're not over-serving people in the community.
Certainly.
Yeah. You can go down. Because we're.
That's our business. So we're working with Marcy Hospitality. We are the hospitality arm of Tattersall's project. So we will be running the restaurants, the all the food and beverage operations. And, uh, we run several properties that you might be aware of. The St. Paul Hotel, um, we run the River Center. Um, we have, of course, and so we do responsible server training for our employees. I serve safe myself, and we make sure that everyone's, uh, trained and aware. We also probably are more, uh, particular about our reputation. So we do not want to be a company that has underwritten peers or anything like that. So we take it very, very seriously.
Thank you. Anybody else have anything? Okay, thanks, sir.
Thank you.
Okay, first and second, all favor?
I.
Both. Okay, next we'll close the council hearing and we'll open up the public hearing on this two thousand twenty-one dash zero eight, creating chapter twelve, got sixteen, got, uh, zero, zero, seven, zero, F, term monitor management, performance standards. And this will be the first reading. Anybody in the audience has anything to say about this? Okay, so I will, uh, close the public hearing and open the second question from the council. Questions, okay? The second, the secondary reading on this will be in our next council meeting, which will be September twenty-eighth. Okay. Let's move on to the consent agenda. First thing is a protocol current resolution. Uh, declaring that on exercise special plea assessment, please pause under section sixty-six dash dot zero, seven, zero, three, Wisconsin's statutes for the benefit of River Falls Business Improvement District. Next one is a resolution warning golfing channel realisation to Madison contractors. And then we are pulling.
Mr. Mayor, I move for approval of the consent agenda items seven and eight.
Perfect. Mr. Second question for Adams? Okay, all in favor?
I.
Hold. Okay. I can move on to the legislature before. Looking for any questions for Scott? We all be done.
Thinking of those, I have a few updates I'll just run through quickly and be happy to take questions. Um, cook out conversations with the mayor and city council.
I'm always thinking.
In, uh, in the district relocation, um, these events are open to anyone in the city. You don't have to live in the district that they're being hosted in. Um, this event Thursday will be about the Kenny Trail. Um, and we look for, uh, I think we have a white tent, um, to signify that. So I believe the location, the exact location is going to be on the side close to the former power plant. Small lot there. You know any different, Mayor?
Sure, you were one. Same place last year.
Um, Bacon Bash returns to River Falls September eighteenth and nineteenth. The Chamber of Commerce website is the best place to get information about that. It's RFChamber.com. Um, River Falls Fire Department is hosting its annual open house September twenty-seventh from six to eight PM in conjunction, uh, with the fire department open house. The city is partnering with Freeman Drive for a free COVID-nineteen vaccination event. This event will be held at the former food station located at Second and Elm in conjunction with that event. Um, the vaccine will be free and there will be an opportunity for those getting vaccinated at this event to enter trying to win one of several prizes. I believe the governor has extended the one hundred dollar direct benefit from the state. Um, I'm not sure yet if he's extending to the twenty-second. Followed to, if he does, then, uh, the state extends their hundred dollar gift card and certainly will make sure that, uh, those getting vaccinated at that time will do that. Uh, any questions regarding the vaccination clinic can be directed to Assistant City Administrator Strow. October second is homecoming at UWRF. Best place to get information on that would be, uh, at uwrf.edu. October fourth through the ninth, the city is hosting its popular fall cleanup event for city residents. Um, if you go on the city's website, rfc.org, um, you can search spring or fall cleanup, and there'll be information there regarding hours and locations. That'll be held again at the Public Works Facility on Vets and Street. That's October fourth through the ninth. October fifth is the annual Run With The Cops event. That is in conjunction with Special Olympics Wisconsin, and you can find that information on Special Olympics Wisconsin dot org. As, uh, library director mentioned, we do have a number of new staff. I've included those in the report and in the reporting mail of the council today, or in summary, I do want to take a special moment to recognize thirty-three years of service in the city, um, provided by Rhonda Davidson in a number of capacities. Rhonda retired on September seventh, and we wish her all the best and thank, thank you for her ser, thank her for her service to the city. Happy to take any questions, including any questions you'd like me to pass along to any of our partners.
Anybody have anything, Scott?
Yeah, go ahead, Mr. Mike. Thank you, Mayor. Um, you brought up the October second homecoming at UWRF, which raises a couple of concerns about COVID and the weight in the community. It is my understanding that the ten percent surveillance figure that was mentioned by Director Azie Snyder um, is not being reported back to the university in a fashion that allows for public updates of those figures. With that ten percent being essentially our ability as the city to be, to gather thoroughly more of potential issues. Um, are you aware of when that will be corrected? And how we can, what other tools we would have uh, potentially available prior to a significant outbreak in the community, which could then spread to schools, nursing homes, and other people?
I think I understand the question to be, do we have tools or do we have planning for tools that will help us understand kind of proactively or in advance, uh, when we're kind of maybe at the cusp of outbreaks?
Um, then as well as, when will that reporting from the university be available again? What, what has period?
So I'll have to follow up on the question about the university, and I will do so also regarding any of the city's, um, city's ability to do so. I do believe we're still doing the wasteland treatment plan, um, surveillance.
Two weeks later.
But that doesn't significantly give us a heads up. And, um, I think it's more at this point a research tool that they're going to for future pandemics to try to see how that might work rather than giving us an early warning. Um, today, um, that's the primary tool. Otherwise, I'm not aware of significant surveillance other than our communication with Pierce County and their, their, um, ability to access and provide us, um, update on the, she mentioned that I can't think of the acronym for it, but the Minnesota Hospital Bed Coalition, um, which of which our public health is successfully along with the CEO, that they'll find a hospital and able to get all the western Wisconsin hospitals into that, um, data set and into the sharing. Um, so that's been helpful to kind of see how things are moving across the whole region.
Would you, would you characterize Azie's comments tonight as that sort of early warning that we should be very aware of?
Um, I think she, I would characterize, and I've heard this from her for three to four weeks, that she's expecting that we're, we're moving into a critical time as far as, um, spread of the, the virus in the community. That, that this is all in line with her expectations that once schools back in session, some schools have done a better job than others of trying to mitigate. And so we're seeing the results of mitigation or lack of mitigation. So, yeah, I think, um, I will state though that we've asked several times in the last month, month and a half, is there other steps the city should be taking or can take practically to assist public health? Uh, and there's not a lot of optimism or a list of ideas from the city to do essentially this. We're moving into a period where as policymakers, you've made new policies for the city, they've given us authority to, to masking and other mitigation strategies. Um, and so has the school board and the UW in River Falls. But at this point, they're asking people to take individual responsibility for their, um, behavior in order to try to limit and mitigate the spread.
Was that working on?
Um, time will tell. Anybody else like a follow up with the? Here's our other workers.
Yeah, just the further information on the UWRF, when that will be available on a useful timeframe for members of the public, uh, and also the percent vaccinated in UWRF that we're looking at in the area.
Thank you.
Anybody else have anything for Scott? I saw him.
So when you've been talking, you and Jason have been talking to, um, Miss Snyder. She does not think that the city council having asking businesses to require masks and things like that is something that would be helpful. Or I know that some places do, but not all. Um, and I would agree with her when it comes out in the community from last time, people are not masking at the rate they were even three months ago. Um, is there a way that the city council could help with that, or is that not something on the list of things that she thought would be helpful?
I think it's, here's the thing, you can try to lead by example, it's helpful. Maybe I don't want to characterize, I guess I'll have to get back to you with her specific answer because I don't want to try to put words in her mouth. Uh, what we've asked as an organization, is there something we can put our muscle behind or leave behind or step behind? Um, we certainly have a list of things that she, she may ask us to do, including if, if, um, the rate of spread quickens, then she, she has certain visitor ability for city staff to help with facing your other, other tasks that public health wouldn't be able to come up with. But I think it, uh, I would have to ask her, is what she thinks the city council can do, if anything.
Yeah, because as I understand it, before I came on, there was some talk about the city council potentially doing a mask mandate for the city of River Falls, but that didn't happen because of the authority, the authorities that we have. Is that still, does that still hold true that we might not have the authority to enforce?
Yeah, without, um, without oversimplifying the answer, it's, this is really something the city doesn't have clear authority, um, to practically. I think there's probably still reasonable legal debate about whether we have the authorities or power. But I think that's a stretch at this point, given, given what we've seen on the legal front, that it's primarily we've been put in a role of encouraging and then setting practices for our own employees and our own organization. So, do you know anything different, Tony, or heard about our authority to do? There are some specific examples, sorry to interrupt before you get started. We've, we've opined that you could potentially do things around issuing something new liquor licenses. I mean, you could, reasonable, but even that, there's some best property rights and other things in state law you don't know.
Correct. In regard to a general mask mandate, there is no case law out there yet saying, yes, you can or no, you can't. The communities that have implemented that have done so through their local health officer, their local health department, not through the police powers of the city. There's argument, you could do that, but if you do do it, then you run into the question of practically enforcement, which is another difficulty as well. Reasonably, if you had a mandate, the difficulty is clients with individual businesses and getting into buying that as well.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
Okay, anybody else have anything for Scott? Okay. We will go on to, uh, we have an announcement, September is library card sign up month. We will go on to, we have an announcement that September is Library Card Sign-up Month, and Ms. Miller will read us a proclamation for this, and she sits down in the library room.
Thank you, Mayor. September is Library Card Sign-up Month, and so the proclamation reads as follows. Whereas a library card is the most essential school supply of all, whereas libraries and librarians play a crucial role in the education and development of children, offering a variety of programs to stimulate an interest in reading and learning. Whereas library resources serve students of all ages, from early literacy to STEAM programs to research databases. Whereas signing up for a library card is the first step on the path toward academic achievement and lifelong learning, giving students the tools that foster success in the classroom and beyond. Whereas librarians create welcoming and inclusive spaces for students of all backgrounds to learn together and engage with one another. Whereas a library card empowers all people to pursue their dreams and explore new passions and interests. Whereas libraries are constantly transforming and expanding services to meet the evolving needs of their communities. Therefore, be resolved that I, Councilperson Alyssa Miller, proclaim September Library Card Sign-up Month in the city of River Falls, and encourage everyone to our library sign up for their own library card.
Thank you. Okay. We're reaching the closed session, 1945 for, I need for the following purposes, delivering or you know, geez, we go to get the purchasing of public properties, the investing of public funds, or conducting other specified public business whenever competitive or bargaining reasons require a closed session to it, by Calvert Corporate Park Lot D.
Mr. Mayor, I move we move into close session.
Second. Christie, have a roll call, please.
Yes. Sir, with Oliverson, London?
Aye.
Dean?
Aye. Aye.
Claire? Aye.
Aye. Aye. We are in closed sessions.